I'll call the meeting to order. First item is to approve the minutes of April 7, 2021. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of April 7. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
Yeah, just in the discussion when we were talking about the solar in the pit, what kind of gets left out of the summary is that we need a discussion about what will happen with the pit. So somewhere it's slightly referred to, but it's not very clear.
Also, under review, the orders, bills and warrants, somebody says the motion was not made. It was in the hassle when we did the signing. We were signing the warrant. So there was a motion made and seconded and passed. So it's not a major issue, but I think Sue has a perfect point that the discussion evolved. And I think Scott brought it up also, that we need to discuss the overall use of that pit, what the whole pit's going to amount to, whether we use half of it for the array. But we'll get into that in the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
Nothing.
Anyone have any?
Yeah, I have something. This is just very routine. It's a simple request that whoever prepares the packets, can you please keep each document separately? Because in this packet, we've got some of the minutes on the back.
Double sided them.
Double sided. And it's, we've got a lot of papers here in these packets, and it's confusing to figure out what's going on.
You can just go on the website and turn off your own minutes.
Yeah, I know, just try and pull it out what you want.
That's what I do.
But also it would be really helpful if somebody would just put page numbers on each document. That would really help too. Just a simple request. Thank you.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. It'll be three minutes per person. Let's go with the board first. Seeing none. Scott, do you have any? While you're doing that, we'll look at the public. Any public comments from the public that are present? Seeing none. Want to manager's report?
Scott said he had a comment.
Oh, that's all right. I'll go ahead and do it under manager's report.
You can do it right now.
So last weekend obviously was green up for folks that participated and helped clean up in and around town and also in the village. Thank you very much. We collected a significant number of tires, which seems to be the year-to-year winner in terms of the bulk items that we do pick up. We picked up over almost 400 tires at various locations. And with the cost for disposal, that's going to be a fairly significant number. But again, it was a successful event. We do appreciate it. I know folks were working downtown, Elijah, which are very helpful as well. So things are definitely on the up and up, and we thank everybody who did participate. In terms of reopening and where we stand with issues relating to COVID and restrictions, we're hitting another milestone in relationship to the governor's emergency orders. We're now in a new phase. So there's new guidelines for gatherings. There's new guidelines for mask wearing. It impacts our staff somewhat when they're working outdoors, as well as it impacts us in terms of our reopening of the Opera House. We've been discussing various options and issues that relate to that. And I think we've pushed up some of our target dates for potentially reopening the Opera House for public attending for movies and other events, given the fact that right now everything looks like it's pointing in a very optimistic direction. So we will continue to update you. Obviously, it impacts the hours that we're open here as well. So we'll certainly come back to the board. I think we have another update this Thursday. And if this continues in a positive direction, we'll be back at your next meeting to talk about how that's going to impact reopening the theater and then how it's going to impact our staffing and village hall and the hours that we're actually open here in town hall. So we'll keep you in the loop on that as we go forward. And then finally, we do have a list of projects that are still ongoing with reopening the Opera House. We hope to have the committee meet sometime, probably next week, just to give an update. And then we hope to have some further activity with this board, probably later in either May or early June, just to decide how we want to structure ourselves to go forward as we're waiting on some of the larger aspects of reopening. The grant that Gary applied for, and really appreciate the extra effort it took, the shuttered venue grant was a tremendous amount of work, and it was also a time-sensitive grant. So you're racing against a clock. The website crashed when it initially was supposed to be open. Then it reopened, and you had to sort of then run to get your application in to get it actually within the various tranches of when the money would be available. So I guess the good news is Gary was able to get our application in in that first round. The not-so-good news is we have no idea because of the volume of people that applied and the lack of additional communication from the SBA when the grants might be acted upon or when the money might actually be available. So some of the work that we're going to talk about as we go forward, we're going to have to maybe make assumptions or assume or hope that we're going to be able to get reimbursement through the SVOG. But at this point in time, there just is no schedule or timeline for how that money might actually come and actually flow to us so that we might be able to give you a sense of the next 12 to 24 months. Same thing also is, again, the federal government is supposedly giving us money under the Recovery Act. Been listening to multiple webinars and multiple weekly conference calls. The latest guidance that we were getting from our federal partners and some of our state associations is they are supposed to be releasing some sort of guidelines on May 18. And that is really for the first tranche of money. There'll be two separate money releases. We're not sure how that money's going to get released, if it's going to get released directly to the impact to the communities or through the states or through some other federal funding mechanism. That's still not clear. So we will hopefully get more information on the 18th and then be able to hopefully update you at our May meeting as to how much money we would potentially be receiving, when we might think we're going to get that money, and what other parameters might be involved with the expenditure of that money as we go forward. So there's lots of items that are slowly coming to fruition. It's a little bit of frustration because we don't have hard and fast ideas of when we might qualify or if we'll qualify and how much money we're actually going to receive. So these are the dates that we're working with, and if they change or if there's updates, we'll certainly let you know. But that's the update that we have at the current time.
What's up? Can you just touch on this resilience zone profile thing? It was in the packet, but there's nothing on the agenda for it. Something we need to do or somebody handling that?
An item that Green Mountain Power was circulating amongst communities. It's a project that they're working on. It sort of relates to disaster recovery and disaster, your ability to effectively weather storms. It's something that I think we had circulated to at least have an initial look through the Energy Committee and maybe through the board. And if it looks like something we might want to participate in, at least engage with Green Mountain Power and see if it's something that we might want to do going forward. I think some of it, Peter, is looking at microgrids, looking at other updates, looking at ways that you can make your basic infrastructure more resilient. So when we have these more frequent and larger scale events, we'll be, I think, in a better place in terms of weathering these storms and then being able to recover more quickly. So that's, I think, the basic outline of the program. Of the specific details, I don't have yet because you sort of have to go through this intake process through Green Mountain.
Okay. Any questions for the manager? Okay. Going under the agenda, first one up is the Energy Committee with Mr. Bergstrom. And there's an information sheet that was handed out before we got the meeting, and Peter has some if somebody wants any.
Peter, could you just make sure your, is your microphone on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right. Seems official now. Well, thank you for having me. My name's Peter Bergstrom. I am the town energy coordinator, which basically means I advise the town on energy-related issues. And the one that I looked at to talk to you about tonight is solar development at the town-owned gravel pit. It's at 2029 Rockingham Road. And we discussed this at a meeting of the Energy Committee on Monday, and I talked to several people on the phone since then to try to figure out what our options were. So this gravel pit's about 44 acres. It's located right near the Bartonville Bridge. It's on the wall behind me there between 103 and the Williams River. It's adjacent to what used to be the state police barracks. Roughly about half of the parcel appears to be open and good for solar development. And we've been talking to the Select Board on and off for about seven years about the possibility of solar there. And most of that discussion has been about a fairly small array, 500 kilowatts. I mean, that's small by today's standards. That would only use a small part of the array of the parcel, three or four acres. But after discussing it with the Energy Committee and others, we think that better use of the site would be a much larger array that used most of that open land. And that would generate a bit over 2 megawatts. So about four times bigger than the 500 kilowatt array. And the reason, there's several reasons why this would be good for the town. The first is that it would put us over our renewable energy goals for 2050. We're already more than 70% of the way there. We've done really well with solar development. But a new array would put us over that goal. And there are a bunch of towns like Grafton and Athens and Townsend that aren't very far along at all. And I don't know whether that's because, I don't know why, maybe they just don't have suitable sites. But the state set goals for each town, but I think there's some towns that are going to have a lot of trouble meeting them. So even if we added another 500 KW array, that's the size that was built on Jackson Road a couple of years ago, we would meet our goal. So when you're dealing with energy projects, you have to deal with the Public Utilities Commission, and they give deference to towns that, where the town plan has information about citing of renewable energy. And we've been working with the Planning Commission on this, and we have a draft energy chapter that we're going to, we hope to advance to the Planning Commission soon. And apparently, once you meet your town energy goal, that gives you more deference from the Public Utilities Commission in terms of citing of arrays, especially about citing projects where the Select Board doesn't want them to go.
It's not that you have to meet the goal, but that you have plans for where that energy can go.
Ah, okay. Thanks, Mike.
I think it would add, I think it definitely would add to the town's standing to be able to say, Public Utilities Commission, we have already met the goal. So this is in reference to if someone else was to propose a renewable energy project, particularly, you know, in this case, we're talking about solar here since wind is not really viable in Rockingham, that the town has no standing in the permitting process unless you plan for where renewable energy can go. Of course, they eventually want you to meet that energy goal that Peter's been talking about.
So there's several reasons why that the town parcel is good for solar development and why it would benefit the town. As a former gravel pit, it's a preferred site. That means they're eligible for higher payments per kilowatt generated, and that makes them more attractive to solar developers. It's fairly level, and a lot of it has good exposure. And as I said before, about half of it is open, so there seems to be space for a 2.2 megawatt project. That's the biggest project that's currently allowed in Vermont is 2.2 megawatts. They built one recently in Jericho. It already has three-phase power, which you need for large arrays, although there may still need to be some line work on the site. Aesthetic impacts appear to be minimal. You really can't see, you wouldn't really see an array that was there. And, you know, perhaps the most interesting part for the town might be how much money they would get out of it, especially if the town agreed to sell the parcel to a developer. They'd get the money from the sale. They would get the property tax since it would now be on the tax rolls. And there would be an annual solar tax. It's like personal property tax, like similar to what the town gets now from the hydroelectric plant and the other solar arrays. So it would bring quite a bit of money into the town. So essentially, a commercial development on the site, even though there's no factory and there are no workers coming and going, but it would generate income. And so the more we thought about the site, we thought it was important that the town consider using the entire parcel and not just look at projects that would use part of it. And we are, both the Conservation Commission and the Energy Committee are recommending that the town look at projects that would use the whole site for solar. And one of the terms involved are renewable energy certificates or credits or RECs. And some projects get built and those get sold out of state to meet the energy goals of other states. But we don't support that. And the process for the larger array, the power would actually be sold to the state. So the credits would stay in state. So I learned today how to build an array larger than 500 kilowatts. I'd never dealt with one before. So there's something called the standard offer process, which is how the state decides, usually around June or July, where they're going to buy solar energy electricity that year. They have an amount budgeted that they can buy, and they solicit offers from solar developers with a price at which they're offering the electricity. And then they give the, award the contracts to the low bidders on the electricity because they want to, you know, save the ratepayers money. So they typically buy 17 to 25 megawatts a year, and they select about eight to 10 projects because they can't be any larger than 2.2 megawatts. And that includes the one that was built in Jericho that I mentioned earlier. So how the town could participate in this is that the town would need to select a solar developer who's interested, ideally by the end of May. I know that's incredibly soon, but if we wanted to participate in the standard offer this year, there'd be no cost to the town, but the town would need to decide to which developer they wanted to lease or sell the land. And then the developer would do all the rest of the work, preparing the proposal and submitting it. I talked to two different solar developers today. They thought the site looked suitable for a large array, and they were interested in making an offer. And I think both companies are represented on the Zoom call if the Select Board has any particular questions. They were MHG Solar, which is the same company that came to your last meeting about the hay field next to the meeting house, and Norwich Solar Technologies. They've both done projects of this size and are very capable in building one at the gravel pit. So then, once the town selected a solar developer and signed a, it's an option to lease or buy the parcel, then the developer would submit an offer to the state to build a large array. They'd propose a price at which they'd sell the power. Then the state chooses the lowest bidders and basically awards a contract to those bidders to build the array. So I asked what happens if the project's not selected. I don't know how often that happens, but the option would expire. The town would decide then what to do with the parcel. And the developer can offer the town an annual fee during the option period if they choose to do so. So the Energy Committee and the Conservation Commission are recommending that the Select Board explore developing all or some of the site for solar. We recommend all of it. And that we should be thinking bigger than the 500 kilowatt array that was proposed previously. So that is our recommendation, and I'll take any questions that people have.
Go ahead, Rick.
How does the electricity get to GMP? The state buys it, and does the GMP or a power provider buys it from the state? Is that how it works?
I'm not sure how that works. I mean, it goes directly into the grid. It's very different from the process with the smaller arrays where you have off-takers and net metering credits. That's what the town and the village did. It's sold directly to the state, so I don't know how it gets to us from there.
This is Thomas Hand. I'm from MHG, so I'd be happy to answer if you'd like.
Sell it to somebody else, is that correct? Yeah, we'll do the board first, though.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
So the state, if they, I know in one of the proposals that was mentioned before, something about the schools, I think Mike mentioned that also, about the schools locally. But if it goes to the state, they're the deciding factor, you know?
Right. Yeah, no, the discussion about the schools as off-takers was when we were thinking about the smaller net metering proposal. So this is a completely different scenario.
Now, if we, if we, the decision's made to lease, do they still pay a property tax or some sort of a?
No.
A tax on the, I know they had this argument in Westminster when they tried to build one down there. If they wanted to pay them to pay tax, probably a personal property tax, I assume, of equipment.
Yeah, that's, the arrays that are already in town should be doing that.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just asking as a question.
Yeah, no, it's like a personal property tax, like what the hydro plant pays on the value of the equipment.
Mrs. Bond, do you have a question?
Yeah. So you talked about how a 500-watt array would get us over our limit. Would this larger array count towards that or would it be not in the sense it's going to go to the state?
Well, we would have met our town goal, but it would go towards meeting the state goal. And as I said earlier, there are always going to be small towns with, you know, 200, 500 people who aren't going to.
Make their town. But if we did the larger way, some of that would be applied to our town goal, right?
Oh, yeah, we would have met it. With 2.2 megawatts, we would be far beyond our town.
Right, and then access would go towards the state goal.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay.
I think it's important to remember too that the goal is 90% renewable. So when we exceed that, it doesn't mean, you know, we get to 91, we haven't met all of the town's needs.
Right, yeah.
Through renewable energy. So there is a benefit to us going there. And it's also based, the 250 goal, 2050 goal is based on projections of energy use by then. And of course, we see how the electrification of things, population changes could change that, and those goals could move upwards, you know, by 2050.
Yeah.
Sue, do you have something?
Yeah, when you say using all of the pit, what is, that's the 44 acres that you're saying, or is it the 20, the open 20-something acre?
Probably just the open 20. I mean, it's hard to tell exactly from a little map, but yeah, but the developer would lease or buy all of the parcel.
So basically, from where this is here in the map, back north, you're heading north through the tester.
The map you got from Green Lantern, that's sort of the northern bulge on the parcel, and it extends farther south.
But it goes further north too, I think.
A little bit. There's a little blip that goes further north. Yeah.
So when we, we've looked at GIS maps ourselves, and it looks that somewhere between 20 and 25 acres is open, the parcel's on the town list for 44. We didn't check that with, using GIS to confirm it actually is 44. But, but look, using GIS, we have seen that it is, depending on what could actually be developed, you know, the maximum would probably be, you know, 24, 25, but it's likely to be less because of topography and shadowing and so forth of the part that's open. And then the remaining part, a lot of that's repair and buffer, which no one would want to, you know, get into. And the one day, if you look at the 500 KW proposal that was there, you'll see that was put forth the last meeting, that that is, they've got that label, it's 3.1 acres. Now, obviously, there's going to be a little bit more for roadways and so forth. You know, when we started looking at this, the technology only allowed for 5 KW, 500 KW to be produced on five acres. So the technology efficiency has gotten better so that there's less acreage required for the same amount of power. So that's where we're getting, you know, so if you take 500, you know, and you get, if you take 20 acres, you know, 500 takes three acres, and then we've got about 20 open. That's where the rough calculation comes from, that you could get to 2.2. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I should say too, one thing that didn't make it into the write-up that we gave you, so a lot of the reason that these 500, there is, the 500-acre KW projects are the most common is because they're, the way they're regulated and the way they're funded, and they tend to be these net metering projects where you would have off-takers, like the town has already become an off-taker, or the schools could be an off-taker in those net metering projects. Those net metering projects for regulation reasons, reasons, don't go above 500 KW. And because of the state regulations, you also can't put multiple 500 KW projects on the same piece of land. Now, Ralph told me last time that there is a loophole to that that has to do with how you connect, but I would really want to have somebody who understands the regulations who better, who could, you know, hear, who could explain where it has to do. You can't connect all on the same pole. You can't share the same roads. It seems to me like an odd loophole, but you would have to know that. And that's, I think, part of the reason why, you know, if the town was to go forward, we want them, want the town to consider whether the whole parcel could be available. Because once you build that one 500 KW project, if the town ever decided later that it wanted to add solar, there might be regulatory roadblocks to that because you didn't plan for that at the beginning. And so, you know, we're not totally opposed to if it came down to that that's the only option, that there was a one 500 KW project built there. But since this project is such a good preferred site, that not only would meet the town goals but help the state meet the goals in a place where there's, you know, so many of these projects run into problems because of aesthetics in particular, but we're also, you know, trying to build them on farmland and so forth. This parcel really should be considered, you know, for the entire one, because there really, there aren't that many sites that are this perfect in that respect.
True. But we do need some place for our town pit. I mean, and if it's, I don't know, I would have to really see a map to know where, what would be left available. Because we do have crushing that has to be done, the materials that are stored that are at the southern end of that parcel now. How much we need, we would have to talk to Highway about that. But I wouldn't want to have, I think we still need part of that parcel for our own purposes.
Okay. Well, I don't think the 2.2 megawatt array would need the entire parcel.
Mike, do you have anything?
Are there any other sites in town that would work as well as the site for a large solar way like this? Is this pretty much, we're looking at this as the only option on that site if we're to do that?
I think so. The 500 KW that was built on Jackson Road is on a gravel pit just across 103 because that glacier put the gravel there. But yeah, I don't know of any other comparable. sites.
Scott, could you kind of give them a lead in, or us a lead in to where we stand with the pit and what we might need if you didn't even know that, and where we are with the 250 and?
We still have some closeout requirements to go through. There's still some material that has to be re-screened and then, and then brought back for cover. The closure, all of the items in the closure has, have not been completed, they're not significant. The storage and some of the other items, I think, is more of a discussion in terms of what other alternatives do we have, because that's always, you know, a concern of space. So you can always make do, but I don't think, Peter, that would, that would foreclose us, you know, finishing off what we have to do, satisfy the state requirements and then move forward if you were interested in a lease. We could also certainly include some of the cost of that closure in our discussion with any permittee, if that's something that the board is also interested in pursuing. Certainly that avoids some upfront costs for the town, and then it also then gives some incentive to them to, you know, to move forward on a development as well.
Has anybody got any idea what we could sell that for?
Well, we haven't had it appraised, and I think like most pieces of property, there's always, you know, a hire and, and depends upon the use, right? Who would come, what particular use you would be pursuing. The issue there is, you know, like, like any commercial development would be your access to your basics, so your water, your sewer. You could do some stuff onsite if you needed to. There is some possibility of actually running a separate water line from a storage facility to that location as opposed to running a new water line all the way out to that location.
Would they need water to do a solar array?
It depends on what you're doing with the, redeveloping the rest of the parcel, in terms of what you would do long-term for that site, not for solar.
Not for solar, though.
I'm just talking about redeveloping it for the benefit of the, of the town in terms of any future use.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think there were some comments from the public.
Well, I didn't get an answer.
Sorry?
Did you answer my question? Do you have any idea of what we could sell?
We don't have an appraisal, because again, an appraiser's going to ask us, what do you want us to praise it for? Right now, it's just basically a, an abandoned and reclaimed gravel pit without working.
Okay, and none of these developers have come forward with any offers, I guess?
This is Thomas Hand. We, we have an offer.
One of them has an offer in mind.
Right, we've done no formal negotiation. It's roughly just been things that were transacted by email, so we, we really haven't sat down and done any real back and forth.
Okay.
There's some comments from the public there? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Thomas Hand from M H G. We, we provided an offer.
You may be muted, you might be muted.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you, turn your mic on.
It isn't.
Can you hear me?
Not him.
No, or yes?
Is the volume on the TV up?
I think it's at the fair end.
Can you not hear me?
Yeah, there's on the Zoom here, you hear him?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
It's us. Okay.
Dope. Can you not hear me at all?
What? It would be the, it would be the speaker. Speaker is off, there we go.
Can you hear me now?
There's some sign language.
Well, I was, we're gonna, if I could just address one of the last, the last statements that were made. You know, I think that the, where, where it's at is, you know, last, last meeting, we, we came in because we heard that, that there were two developers bringing two proposals to the town, neither one of which had numbers involved. And, you know, this was an opportunity for a fresh start to have these discussions. It was great to hear that, you know, after all these years, you know, there was definitely a lot of support in this room and the Select Board to be able to finally make decisions about what to do with this, with this pit, whether this becomes the, what, what happens to it or something else, but, and then we were asked in two weeks to come back with, you know, our, our input on, on that. And so there hasn't been a chance to ask any of these developers to do site visits to, you know, other than, you know, Green Lantern, I don't think, you know, any of these other developers have not had a chance to see the site or, you know, know exactly what the town's willing to do. So that's why there's no numbers, and that's why our proposal was to put out a request for proposals to, to the, you know, see what developers came forward to see what the best deal the town could get.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Yeah, now we got you.
There you go.
Okay. So I've been back here trying to get attention, and now you can hear me. All right, so my name's Thomas Hand from M H G. My partner, Peter, spoke with, Peter on your side today, and we have, we've done projects similar to this. We have a project in Wallingford that's a 2.2 megawatt on a reclaimed gravel pit, very similar scenario. So we, you know, we did a preliminary diligence on this site, spent a fair amount of time on it today, looking at environmental constraints, power lines, you know, river corridor, flood hazards, sort of all the preliminary screens. And the, the preliminary offer that we came up with was $6,500 per acre as a purchase price, so that comes out to $286,000. And then, as far as value, the town would see from a development of that size, we would obviously be the owners of the land, and so we would pay property tax then on the land. That would come out in, somewhere in the neighborhood of $6,000 a year in property tax for the land. And then for the solar installation, this would be a 2.2 megawatt, and the property tax, personal property tax on that would be in the neighborhood of $20,000 a year. So kind of just rough math, you know, $286,000 for the land of purchase price, and then about $26,000 a year in town tax on a, on a PV project.
And that was for the 44 acres or for?
20, right?
So we, we, I mean, sort of up for discussion, we would need approximately 20 acres to build a project of 2.2 megawatts. It's, you know, some of the land on that site, a significant portion of it would not be usable for solar, as I think was mentioned, you know, there's riparian buffers and, and different things like that. So we would be looking to purchase the entire property, that was our initial thought. If that's not what the town wants, we could certainly look at a smaller portion of the, of the overall parcel.
Yeah, this is Martha Staskis with Norwich Solar. Thomas and I would say exactly the same thing. We're in the same line of business, we have the same process, also would do, we can accommodate the town in either way, whether purchasing or leasing the property. I would also, I guess, you know, you folks, if you're going to move forward, should probably look at the scope of experience that the different companies have, and I would just add that, you know, Norwich Solar comes from a background of research and development, and also we're vertically integrated, so we are designing, engineering, permitting, installing, operating, and we have our own operation and maintenance long-term for the life of the project, for lives of all projects. So, and we're right in White River Junction, so we're nearby. We, too, have a 2.2 project under construction right now, actually. So there, you're going to find that the model of offer is very similar. I think the town's going to be challenged with, you know, deciding if, if you, if you're going to move forward, which, which part, which company you would be interested in moving forward with. A couple of things I just wanted to add to the standard offer, the two programs you folks have been talking about, one is the standard offer program as described by Peter, and that, all of that power goes directly into the grid, which mean, and it's shared amongst the utilities, except for like Burlington Electric, Washington Electric, but it's shared across the state. So the, someone asked early on, you know, where are the electrons going? They're going to us, all of us. I'm in Waterbury, you're in Rockingham, Thomas, I think it's in Manchester. So it's going to the benefit of the state of, of us ratepayers, if you will. The net metering is a net metering program, another way that Vermonters can self-generate, we can generate our own electricity within the state. One of the beauties of both of these programs is that these are in-state generation, and so the dollars generated through tax payments, the projects also pay into the state education fund based upon a production payment. So the benefit of these programs, either the net metering program, which as Peter described has, in that case, you go and, there is a specific off taker, and it is in the GMP service territory. But generally speaking, all of these programs avail the town and the state and us ratepayers to benefit from self-generation in the state, and we can recirculate our dollars, our energy dollars in a clean energy way, and we're making jobs for our, our kids, my kids. And so there is benefit for in-state generation like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you know, it's, our next meeting is on the 18th, and we've got, I think the, this target is to have a decision that we so desire by the third, the end of May. I know Ray, Minma, when he was here, Ralph was here last, last meeting, mentioned that the rates are changing on, before that, so they need to get their proposal into the state in order to qualify for the higher rates, which are making more profitable for them.
That was for net metering, though.
Yeah, it's a, a net, net metering, I understand that, but I just, just wanted to say, we've got a few things we've got to decide, you know, consider going forward with this, so. Anyone have any, uh, Rick?
If we sold the 20 acres that were needed for the solar project, would there be enough space left for the functions that Susan mentioned?
I, I don't know, a lot of that 20 meters is the berm and then going straight down the bank to the railroad. I don't know where the railroad property ends and our property ends, I don't know where that dividing line is. A lot of it is completely unusable land for any purpose.
Yeah, there is a river corridor that the state has applied to the Williams River, which does preclude development in it, and that's available on that GIS data layer that was referred to earlier. So that, you, you really, people aren't going to be able to do anything in there, and it does basically cover from the river up through what is existing vegetation, where there's existing growth, you can sort of, if it's not open land, you can figure along the river that's pretty much unavailable for development.
And much of it is steep like this, I mean, it's just completely unusable. The far end, I, I don't know how far back our property goes, that's probably in, might even be in a flood zone, because it flattens out right along the railroad, and that did flood in Irene, so.
Right.
So the far end, I think, would be unusable for anything. It's the south end where we need to store stuff, that's where we need to get the information about how much do we need for our own town highway.
What are we storing there?
Lots of stuff. There is piles and piles of any road that we dig up.
We don't have any gravel in this town right now, that pit is about exhausted, so.
So that's where, that's where you put gravel that you purchase?
Yeah.
No, it's like when they, when they're digging up any road, and then they want to re-crush that and reuse it, that is stored in big piles up there over time, and then it gets crushed and then it gets back used again. And there's, you know, big concrete blocks from there, and there's a lot of stuff up there. How much we need and can it be consolidated in a smaller area?
Is there any other place we can store that stuff?
Nope.
No, it's the only place we really have.
The only place we have. You can't put it in town, at the garage up there, 103, there's no room.
So is that something Scott or someone else could ask about?
Yeah.
Well, we'll do some research into it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
And that's part of that whole closure that we talked about earlier, too. We do have some obligations that we have to meet under Act 250 as well, so, yeah, we have some.
And it's really two Act 250 lots. There's the old one, which is a separate Act 250 from, from where you're talking about putting the solar panel in, that's a separate, and that is finished, that's closed, right? As far as we, there might be a little bit of stuff on it, but it's been reclaimed.
A little bit of material to finish, but it's pretty much been completed.
So is, is there any kind of cost comparison for, compared to what, what kind of money we might make by selling this, and, and what we might, and what, what we might get into if we don't have room for all this cement and everything?
Really, over time, right, all the projects that we do, it's, it's a factor of, you know, we'd have to be more aggressive in how, how we, how we, how we crush and return materials, so we wouldn't store as much, so our future footprint would be smaller. But like anything, there's a cost to everything we do.
Right.
And, you know, there is a cost to do that, to do that work, even though you do produce a usable material at the end. So we really haven't been able to give you a specific guideline to say, yes, we can use seven acres or eight acres, and then we have 30 acres that might be buildable, and maybe 12 or 14 or more that are probably steep slopes and constrained.
Right, I, I understand that, I mean, this looks like a significant amount of income for the town. And what would it cost us to, to not do this, questioning and storing anymore? Anybody have any idea?
Well, no, not necessarily, but I mean, I think, I, I would hate to give up some, if, when you need that land and you don't have it, you're going to be paying someone to store that stuff, you're gonna, and, or trucking it further, or there's other conflict, other factors involved. So, because we are tight in space, I would hate to, I would hate to, and it may need, all we need is five acres, I don't know, we just need to get Scott and Highway to find that out. If we only need five, and the rest of it can go to solar, great.
So how long will it take to figure that out? How long should that take?
Well, we wanted to get a sense of what the board's interest was before we got into any, you know, specific detail about, you know, the last time we talked, we just barely talked about, are we gonna look at a long-range use of the facility with potential utilities or other, you know, highest and best use? That was really sort of the, the last discussion I think we had, and, and if we're going to approach this as a lease or sale, then there's a lot of work that has to be done before the 18th.
And I'm just throwing this out here, but just considering the income that, that solar projects on that site would make, would it make any sense to actually buy another parcel somewhere that, parcel that wouldn't have some suitable for solar, you know, basically trading it out for another piece of property? I'm not saying that's a, you know, something I'd recommend, but just, you know, in the general.
You mean another property where you can throw all this cement and crushed up stuff? Yeah, I know.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, but.
But at that point, you're trading dollars for dollars, I mean, then.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, how much is it going to cost to buy some, any, any place, anywhere, anywhere that has no value, no water, no sewer, no electric lines, just to put this crushed up stuff compared to what you're going to make?
Yeah, but you're also talking about, I mean, we're, we have limited things available to begin with. You go to, you go and look, see what's for sale in town, there is not a lot of things on sale, and there's not a lot of land for sale. I mean, so we have, we have the best piece of big property on that site.
Well, there might be someone who would like to, like to lease you some crappy land that they can't do anything with, to store the stuff.
I think we just gotta wait for the answer to come from Highway to what we need, and, I mean, I, I don't think it's impossible to do both. I think we just need to have a sense of how much do we need, how much are we using now?
Right, we will work on that and get back to you before your meeting on the 18th, so you'll have that information.
Question? If there were a negotiation process to take place, would the town manager be doing that, or how would that process work?
Sale or lease would come back through the board for approval. There'd be a process to go through. We'd also have to involve the town attorney, because anytime we wanted, you know, have any disposition of land, I think it's always smart to have the attorney involved, so there's a process.
Yeah, and there might be hearings involved, too, I'm not sure what the process is.
Yeah, I don't know, sometimes, I, I thought I heard somewhere or saw somewhere that, that has to be, sale of property has to be done in, especially real estate, at, at a town meeting, so maybe I'm well-wed on that one, I don't know.
I don't recall that specifically, Peter, but there's, I'm sure there's some obligation for public process before we do any type of sale.
So it's not a snap, quick decision in, in a week, so.
I mean, it might be a situation where it's a lease, and then you go into the sale.
Yeah, you could do at least a purchase, I mean, that's, that's the other way to look at it. And you're still, you're still getting the, you know, the revenue that you're looking for, and, and the option for them to purchase it.
Right.
Well, Peter, one more, and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, just quickly, this standard offer, as I understand it, is done once a year, so if the timing doesn't work out this year, it might happen next year, and there, there might also be other ways to, to fund the array. And there might also be other ways to fund the array.
Thank you so much, Peter.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
This is, could I just ask one question? Is there anything that you would like to see from us in the, you know, in the next coming days or weeks that would be helpful?
It would be helpful for me to see, I know you don't have a survey of the area, but at least a visual of where you think in that parcel the arrays would have to go. Because it does narrow out and there are some constraints, I think.
We can provide that easily.
Yeah, if you could get that information to Scott and he'll get it, disseminate it to the rest of the board.
Yep.
Will do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the updated presentation of the Depot Street Bridge. I believe there's some state people out there.
Yep, I think we've got Scott Burbank.
Yeah, I thought I saw his name on there somewhere.
Scott's with VHB and they were the folks that did our last update and then some additional information since our March 30th meeting. So Scott, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Great. Perfect.
Perfect.
Yeah, we have some information in the packet, so we're, go have it, have right at it.
Yeah, as I say, we have a PowerPoint, but it just basically reiterates the information we sent you. We can show that on the screen or you can choose, I mean, same information, just with pretty pictures, I guess.
I think that would be good for the other people watching and for the Fact TV.
Oh, yeah, maybe for people on Zoom, yeah.
All right, yeah, I guess, just let me know, Scott, when you're, I'm allowed to share screens.
I hate PowerPoints. I hate PowerPoint.
Yeah, I think right there.
All right, Scott, I think you're it now. Okay, are you able to see my screen?
There we go.
There we go. All right, so just to go quickly through this, per the select board meeting, I guess it was select board and village trustee meeting on March 30th, the town asked that we go back and look at the previous alternatives, which were developed as part of the scoping report by V-Trans. So we have done that and we basically came back with costs. And what we've done, I guess, different from what you saw before in the scoping study, is we've incorporated the information we gained from our preliminary design, which is including impacts to the hydro dam, to the power dam. And then as well as the scarcity event, we added a scarcity event in there just to have something to sort of show what happens. Obviously, what the thinking is, longer duration of closed time on the canal means the potential for greater scarcity events. And then we also looked at, you know, what would be the town share? And currently, in the proposed scenario, it's 5%. But if we go with other scenarios, that could be 10% because we're not closing a road and implementing a detour. And then we basically broke it down at the end to basically a max and min of the town's shares, which I will share that information, which the select board has in the memo I sent them on the last slide. So I guess just so everyone is aware, if I can move forward here, here we go. So I'm Scott Burbank again with VHB. John Griffin is on the line with me there. And so I guess just getting into the alternative. So basically looking at an offline alternative up by what was referred to as the Chinese restaurant, further to the north of this structure. And we looked at two options. One is to keep the bridge in place, the current bridge you see on the screen, rehab it, turn it into a pedestrian bridge. The other option was to remove this bridge and then not have any crossing at this location on Depot Street. Third option was the option that you were familiar with, the precast concrete arch. And our fourth one is, of course, the prefab steel truss. So just sort of quickly going through those, this is a plan view of where we would put in the new off-alignment bridge going over the canal. So you can see it's closer to the truss bridge up by GMRC. This will accommodate the WB67s. There was talk about if we, if you repair the bridge between the island and New Hampshire, truck traffic would cross. So this will allow that to occur. We turned the existing pedestrian bridge into a, our existing, sorry, concrete arch bridge into a pedestrian bridge. One of the reasons not to do that, or not necessarily negative, but just to be, the town should be aware of, is if we do that, it's no longer part of the bridges, V-Trans by annual inspections. I think in the memo, I said annual, but V-Trans does their bridge inspections every other year, every two years. So they, V-Trans would not inspect the concrete bridge. They obviously would inspect the new bridge, but not the concrete bridge, which means additionally, the other thing is maintenance of the concrete bridge would no longer be eligible for the town bridge program. The new structure would, but the bridge at, you know, that's currently where Depot Street is today would totally, all maintenance, all repair would totally be responsibility of the town going forward in the future. Water and sewer line work would be solely the responsibility of the town because in theory, we would not be disturbing the bridge. So the water and sewer that goes along current Depot Street would remain. So there's no project share for that. And then we would anticipate at least a three-month shutdown of the canal to repair that bridge, the existing bridge. And then the town share would be 10%. And this is because obviously you would put traffic on Depot Street while you built the off-alignment. So moving on to the next one, same alignment, pretty much the same scenario, except we remove the existing concrete arch. And what that does by doing that is there's no future town maintenance. Obviously, there's no bridge to inspect, so no longer a problem there. Portions of the water and sewer work would be considered project-eligible because we are obviously removing the concrete arch. So we have to do something with the water and sewer so that becomes part of the project cost. And then we would anticipate a one-month shutdown for removal of the existing concrete arch, which is what we talked about in our meeting on March 30th. And then lastly, the town share would be 10%. And again, that's because we would build the bridge off-alignment while traffic was maintained on Depot Street. Looking at the next alternative, this is the precast concrete arch bridge. So this is the original concept where we removed and replaced the existing concrete arch. I guess, you know, nothing really different from what we talked about before. One thing, though, we did look at was the WB67, which is the tractor with a sleeping quarters and then a 53-foot trailer. We did tweak the alignment in terms of where it comes in on the west side of the, we moved it, it was an 87-degree angle and moved it closer to 90. I want to say 15 degrees, but that seems like it'd be over 90. But anyways, by doing that, you can allow a WB67 to maneuver through Depot Street onto Canal Street and vice versa, canal onto Depot Street. The issue is that the tractor trailer is going to overhang your sidewalk and it's going to be in opposing traffic. So if you imagine coming south on Canal Street, they'll stop, they're going to have to wait till both lanes of Depot Street are clear, they're going to turn into, they're going to turn as far as they can to the south and then crank it around to the north. And then that tractor trailer is actually going to like go over the sidewalk. So conflict with pedestrians. Doesn't mean it can't be done. And I guess to note, we're doing this in a program called Auto Turn, which is known to be conservative. The drivers will, you know, do it easier. Less experienced drivers will struggle and not, you know, with it a little more. But it can be done, but it's not exactly preferred because you're opposing traffic, right? Driving into opposing traffic, but it is possible. Other things to note, existing concrete arches removed, no future town maintenance, water and sewer work as before would be eligible. And then we anticipate, as we noted before, an eight-month closure for this auction because we would have to go in, put in coffer dams, demo the bridge, build a new bridge. So it would be a longer period and thus a longer time with impacts to the canal. With this one, the town share is 5%. And the last option is the steel girder option, basic steel girder, sorry, steel truss bridge. So this would be essentially replacing the existing concrete arch with a new prefabricated steel truss, similar to the precast concrete arch. We would move this one slightly further to the north on the west side. That allows us to have the same turning movement as a WB67. It doesn't improve it from the concrete arch, they're essentially the same because the width of the deck is the same. It's just this one happens to have these, you know, this arch sticking up, but the space that's usable by the tractor trailer is the same. So no real change there. They will be into opposing lane. The trailer will overhang the sidewalk. Obviously, again, no future maintenance. We will have to work with the sewer and water as part of the project because obviously we're removing the arch. And then this one anticipates approximately a three-month shutdown for removal of the existing arch and construction of the steel truss. And then lastly, the town share here is 5%. So that's a lot of information in a short period of time.
Scott, real quick, just, I was looking at the scarcity event when I put the three-month shutdown in there, it's actually one month.
Oh, thank you. So that was.
Apologies.
Yeah, I thought it was one month, so, yeah, apologies. So it's really a one-month shutdown for removal of the existing arch because that's what it was in the previous. So good point. As I was reading that, I was like, I don't think that's right, but, you know, I just smile, so. Do what the teleprompter tells me to do. Okay, so what we said to the select board was this sort of this, what we call a matrix. And as you can see, it lays out the cost and there's a lot of numbers in there. And I guess the thing to note is the numbers highlighted in yellow under the off-alignment, that's the water and sewer line that would not be, you know, the project share. This is if we keep the concrete arch, do the off-alignment. So that monies gets added back down into the cost down here when we look at the town contribution. So, but otherwise, those costs you see are participating within each of these columns. So we basically have new bridge off-alignment with repair, new bridge off-alignment with removal, and then the concrete arch and the truss. And the numbers that are a true value for you guys are right down here in this area. So at the very bottom, you can see the town share. And you will note that the truss arch at $265,150.20 or $285,152.20, that is the cheapest town share. And then they go up from there with the largest town share being in the millions of dollars. And that's if we keep the arch and build the bridge off-alignment. So again, a lot of information, but I know we sent the select board the information previously. So hopefully you've had a chance to study it and we can respond to any questions.
Scott, I think it's just important to note that we had to make a couple of assumptions to create these, right? Chiefly, the duration, assuming one scarcity event, that was three hours long for each month. So those play a big factor in those costs. That's obviously something that we don't know if it will occur or it could occur more than what we've assumed. But that's just important to note that that does impact these dollar figures when you're looking at them.
Yeah, and that's a good point. And to that point, you know, obviously, this is why the, you know, longer time closed down, eight months, we have 24 scarcity events versus one month, we only have three hours of a scarcity event. So it's just taking the 120K an hour that was given to us by Great River Hydro and then just plugging that into the different hours. And like John noted, purely an assumption on our part. No, we will not know that number at all until we're in construction and it occurs, unfortunately. There's just no way to plan.
The right-of-way acquisition cost here, it's kind of interesting, the numbers, how they go across. The new alignment bridge is listed for $75,000 and it goes up from there. What's the reasoning behind that? I mean.
I can talk about that a little bit, Scott, but those are essentially, those are assumed costs based on the level of impact to property owners. With the on-alignment option, there's a lot of potential right-of-way impacts that we have to do for the relocation of the utilities. By going to that off-alignment option, we're actually going to have a limited or a smaller impact, we expect, on the utility relocations. Therefore, potentially less right-of-way impacts to private property owners.
Yeah, and I think it's also to do with the, you know, if we do the work at the bridge, we're going to impact people who live on Canal Street and they may not be able to leave their driveways during certain construction activities, which would be an impact. And we'll have to get right away for that.
Okay, we're gonna have these people back again within the next two meetings. So we're gonna have time to study all this stuff and try and ask, get some, you know, real, to-the-point questions that we can have ready for these people so we can really make our minds up on what we're doing here. So that being said, we'll get the board first and then we'll go to the public. Rick?
So a long shutdown will certainly affect the appraised value of this, of the asset. And that's when the appraisers decide how much the hydro facility is worth. If it's not producing electricity, it's going to be worth way less money and that will impact our tax revenues pretty dramatically. So a long shutdown, I think, hits us in multiple ways.
And the likelihood of one of those expensive events increases them.
Yeah. Big time increase in the money, I can tell you that. Compared to what we were looking at before. I mean, you know.
Exactly.
Bonnie, do you have anything?
No, not right now. I don't think.
Well, my concern is really, well, a couple of things about the, I mean, I love the idea of the off-alignment in a lot of ways, but we cannot leave that bridge there and be responsible for it because if it crashes into the canal, then the power company, we have a huge liability with the power company. That'll be shut down for a very long time while we deal with that. Or, and we've got the, I don't see the village wanting to pay to move those utilities. So that's a problem. And we can't, if you remove it, which is a possibility, you don't have access, easy access to downtown anymore. So, though I like that idea of that in general, I just don't see it as possible financially and just practically.
Lard, anything?
Not right now.
Well, I guess I would like to just say one thing, or this is a question. They're talking about repairing the existing bridge for pedestrian traffic. So anybody have any idea how expensive that will be to maintain for existing pedestrian Anybody?
Honestly, I'm not sure of what those maintenance costs would be. You know, they would certainly be less than it would be maintained for vehicular traffic because it has a lower necessity for capacity, right? So, I mean, I'm not sure what the town has spent on maintenance on that bridge to date. But I would think that you could speak to your highway department, they would probably have the best figures as to what you guys have done relative to maintenance to date. And I would expect it to be comparable to that or less, certainly, because we would, if we repaired it, it would be left in a better condition than it's in today with a lower demand for loadings. And certainly, you know, there would be a large period of time before you need to start incurring those maintenance activities again, I would expect.
I would think so, too. Can we get something from the highway department? I mean, it seems like it wasn't well-maintained or it wouldn't be in such deplorable condition or, I don't know, maybe that's to be expected because of its age. Can we find out what maintenance has cost from our highway department?
I'm gonna have to.
I think that the problem with that, Bonnie, is you have to make a determination and we don't have a good structural analysis in terms of what the, we know right now because of the vehicular traffic and the spalling of the concrete. And if it continues at the rate that it's continuing, we know that, you know, they'll continue to lower the restrictions on the bridge. And at some point, it'll be to the point where you can't take any traffic over that bridge. I don't know, when they talk about repair, that's always an open-ended item, repair to what level? You can repair spalled concrete and not repair the structural deficiencies in that bridge and it'll look nice for 10 or 20 years. And then it literally might be in worse condition and still look nice because it hasn't had any structural reinforcement or rehabilitation. And to this point, I don't know of anybody who has done that analysis on that. I think the second piece, Bonnie, that nobody knows, and maybe I was hoping VHB might know, is there's a lot of concern about the structural integrity of those canal walls. They were laid how many, a long time ago. I don't even want to speculate as to how old they are, what condition they're in. But anytime you start doing heavy work and excavation, that's going to be a concern. And I don't know how that would impact us going forward.
And the canal walls are our responsibility, right?
No.
No. That's the power company's responsibility.
But if we damage them in construction, that's the problem.
That's my concern. If, in the process of rehabbing or updating this facility, you create some structural...
Wouldn't there be that same problem with the steel truss bridge?
It's a different design, so I'll leave that to the engineers. Maybe they can explain that a little differently than I can. My understanding is it might have less impact on the wall.
We're moving the abutments back further, right, Scott? So we would be behind those walls. We'd have, the only impact would be the removal of the existing structure. But with any construction in that close vicinity... But with any construction in that close vicinity, um, you know, there's, there's the potential risk for, for some amount of damage. But, um, quite honestly, tho- those things can usually be mitigated, uh, thoughtfully taken care of, saw cutting, wherever there's interfaces between the bridge structure and, and other structures. So, um, we can work around those, but there's, there's never no, no risk.
Right. Right. So I think to John's point, you can see in the slide I'm showing here that you see the, the dash line on the bottom come up. That's your canal wall and you will be impacting it because that's the way the bridge is today. Um, if you go to the truss bridge, you see the canal wall and you see the, the foundation, the concrete behind it, which means why not really impacting that stone, laid stone wall that goes down on one and a quarter to one. So basically it goes horizontally one and a quarter feet or one foot three, and it goes vertically one foot. So it's pretty, pretty steep. You know, it's steeper than we would actually design a slope on a roadside of a roadway for. So by going with that option, you would push these things further out, thus avoiding the very thing you're talking about in terms of impacting the walls. However, saying that, to John's point, we are driving piles. So we're vibing these in or hammering these in. So there is concerns, but, um, the goal would not to be to put an excavator in there and try to, um, rip anything apart, which you would have to do if you went with replacing the arch in kind with a precast arch.
Okay. Here's, here's a totally different idea. I haven't heard anybody talk about. Now, when you say repairing it, you're repairing a, a bridge that was built for vehicular traffic.
Uh, or maybe horse and buggy and.
Horse and buggy traffic or something like that.
Yeah.
And if it's going to be a pedestrian bridge, uh, I mean, we would lose our, our historical pretty bridge. Yes. Which we're going to lose if we do the steel truss too. But could we design a smaller bridge designed for pedestrian passage and make it very attractive? Could we do that? And could we do that without endangering the canal wall so much?
So I, yeah, I wasn't going to necessarily bring this up, but, um, cause not my decision. It's your decision. Sorry here. So I flipped through these slides, but to your point, it's probably, I mean, it's not cheap. It could be, I don't know, two hundred, three hundred K. But you could get a continental bridge, which is similar to that prefab bridge. It's just a prefab truss for pedestrian loading. You would make it 10 feet wide and you would just have it span from somewhere to here to somewhere to here. And you would just put it on a bum. It's obviously a lot less loading. And yes, you can maintain the crossing here and then put vehicular traffic over here. The point is though, that Vtrans and John, please correct me wrong, would not participate in that cost. So, um, that would be solely on the town to build this, this crossing because they're giving you this vehicular one here.
That would be my, my, um, initial reaction, but I would have to verify that with our program manager, um, just to, to make sure. But, but that, that would be what we've done in, in past projects with comparable situations. Um, where towns have just elected to apply for a grant through the bike pad program or done the, the project on their own with other forms of grant money to do a, basically a pedestrian crossing specifically that was not co-located with a, you know, a highway asset.
When we had these discussions several years ago, that did come up and that was what we were told that if we did that, it was our dime.
If something, yeah, I know there.
But you still gotta remove the other bridge. So you're still looking at some costs there. So.
Yeah, yeah. You're still looking at some costs. You would remove, Vtrans would remove that bridge though, right? At their cost?
We certainly could include it as part of the project, the removal of the existing bridge.
Then what happens with the sewer line?
So if the sewer line, if the bridge is removed, then the sewer line would basically get, um, rerouted up around to the new bridge.
By Vtrans or by us?
It'd be a participative cost. If I'm not, um, misunderstanding the, the CFR, I'd have to check with my utility coordinator, but I'm fairly certain, um, a pretty high level of confidence that that would be a participating cost. So it would be at the project share of, uh, town share and state share. So it'd just be lumped into the overall project cost.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess, you know, uh, I'm thinking about all kinds of things. I sure had sticker shock when I looked at this paper today. And I made a few phone calls very quickly and talked to some people. One of, one of the people I talked to was Casey Cota, who, uh, is a director of Cota and Cota of fuels, which has, uh, invested a fortune, uh, on their headquarters up there on the island. And one thing Casey said, we should be making decisions and plans based on 60 to a hundred years, not 10 to 20 years. And it's that the cost of that off alignment bridge is terrifying, honestly. It's a lot. But I don't know. It's what we need. That's all I got to say.
Let's not get too deep in this. We got, we got some other public that wanna, may wanna speak. And they're coming back again. So we'll have devote some more time to that, to really pick at these people. But, uh, is there anyone in public that wanted to, uh, pick out Gary or is that with you?
Gary, can you grab that mic so we can capture on the?
Yeah. So I just had a, a quick question. I'm wondering if the, um, the state funds are federal highway or if they're state funds that, if the state contribution is, is federal highway or if they're state funds that the town can match with federal funds?
Uh, this would be federal highway funds, um, 80% federal highway. Um, and then the remaining 20% is split between the state and, and local share.
Thanks.
Ms. Howard.
I have a question regarding right of way, um, for the.
It is now.
Okay. I have a question about the right of way for the, um, off alignment bridge where it goes across, onto the island and through what is called Island Park. And whether the costs for the right of way include a layout for a new town road um, within that park and the acquiring of the property.
So the, that right of way, that acquisition is not included in those costs because that is currently a, a state owned right of way. Um, and I, I'm not honestly sure what the state would, would do for a deal with the town and the town leases that parcel from the state. Um, but we had kind of operated under the assumption that that, that right of way would not be a cost. Um, I can't say factually as to whether or not that's true or not, but we, that was the assumption we made for this estimate. That there was no right away cost for that piece of acquisition on the island for the road.
The town, the town leases that for a dollar a year. Um, so there's been no, I mean, that land is, was part of the Rutland Railroad yard. And it's now owned by the state of Vermont and leased back. And it's all within the agency of transportation. Um, it would seem that it would be worthwhile to have some discussions within your department. So the town would know what's the status of that whole area going to be if the town's going to, you know, decide to put a bridge that way and a road that goes through the park.
Certainly. That would absolutely be the next step that we would take if we, if we had found out that the town was looking at this option. Um, we weren't sure how seriously this like would wanted to consider this alternative as presented. Um, there's obviously other impacts I think that Scott can show here on the screen with, you know, parking. This looks like there's a, some reduced parking. We did gain some of those spaces back by placing parking on Depot Street. Um, but absolutely that is, that is something we would easily be able to, to work through. Um, once we knew which direction we were moving in. And preliminarily, I could at least inquire about what the financial implications would be. Um, we have not done that at this time.
That would be, to me, that would be a wise thing to do since that off alignment option is the most, one of the most expensive, if not the most expensive. And if there's additional costs because of the town needing to acquire all of that land, that could make a difference. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question, um, for the, actually I guess for the Vermont, um, trans, the Vtrans people. There's a lot of funding out there for bicycle and pedestrian. And to pick up on Bonnie's idea, what's the likelihood or does your department fund pedestrian bridges, um, in any way? Or is that something we'd have to seek money elsewhere for?
So, so the agency of transportation does have a competitive grant annually for bike, bicycle and pedestrian, uh, facilities. Um, that grant basically is, um, it is competitive. So communities put in for it every year. And then, uh, those, those proposals are scored and awarded. Um, typically things like a town plan or, or other, uh, planning type activities that have already been done to support the, you know, these connections, uh, score well. Um, so this, this is also an urban environment which scores better than some of the more rural communities because they get a heavier use for, for bike head. But, but yes, the agency of transportation does do, uh, bicycle and pedestrian grants. There's a competitive program that goes out statewide for all municipalities every year.
Thank you.
As I said, they're going to be back again. So, uh, if there's no real pressing stuff, I'd let them down to the next, to item on the agenda and invite them back in a couple of weeks, maybe three weeks. And you can do a little bit of your research and we'll do our research over this end and maybe we'll meet in the middle or somewhere.
Certainly. And I would just want to verify that the only takeaway I, I've heard tonight was that we should look into the cost for the, the land. Uh, I'm sure that a deal could be structured similarly to the lease deal that there is now, um, what, or an acquisition. Um, and just wanted to reiterate to the board that, um, the design team is currently based on pause until the select board, um, makes their decision. So we're not advancing any more alternatives right now. Um, and, uh, we, we look to, to, to get your final word and we'll give you any more information or support that we can.
Very good. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll get going on this and, uh, see how we can get something worked out here very shortly. So you guys can keep moving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three is the appointment to the Rockingham Conservation Committee. There's a letter from Alex Barrett, uh, in regards to that. So I'll entertain the motion.
I move that Alex Barrett be appointed to the Rockingham Conservation Commission.
For a second. Motion been made and seconded, uh, to appoint Alex Barrett to the Conservation Commission. Is there any, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor would vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. In your packet, there is a letter from the Bellas Falls Ordinance Committee in regards to item number four. It's a handicap parking proposal on Green Street.
So this.
I'm gonna let Scott run with this one for a minute.
This, this came out of a conversation about some of the parking and sight distance and safety issues that occur when Dairy Joy is open. And, and on busy days, it's, um, difficult for drivers to turn in and out of Green Street. Um, one of the, one of the, uh, items that we thought might be beneficial is to create two handicap spaces that would be closer to the, uh, current, uh, stop and, uh, stop signs so that it would create, for the most part, um, better sight distance for drivers, both people that are leaving, exiting Green Street as well as people trying to turn in. Um, it also creates, I think, a better enforcement mechanism. Certainly if somebody's parking, uh, illegally in a handicap, there's much higher incentive for that ticket and, and a disincentive for a driver as opposed to just a restricted parking type of activity where the tickets are much, much less significant. So this has been sort of floating through that process, wanted to bring it to the board's attention and, engage some reaction so that if we bring it forward, we'll have some sense of trying to put this into, into place. Again, it's mostly a change in, in our, in our current parking regulations. And then it would be just simply paint. So it's not like anything you do can't be reversed, um, if it turns out to be problematic or an, an area of, of deep concern.
Is, sorry, has, has Dairy Joy been, um, uh, talked about? Have you consulted them?
Not specifically to this proposal. Um, there's been an ongoing conversation about trying to work with parking and neighborhood concerns and just in general. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a back and forth conversation. This is just another piece of it. We would certainly talk to them before we implemented this.
Um, and, and looking at this, um, you know, they're, they're talking about parking on Green Street down there. Why would you want to put parking spaces in when you're trying to eliminate people to park there? Even though it's handicapped and there's investment, it's, to me, this is a, an attract, a, a traffic or a policing issue. And, and the village has the parking ordinance. They also have a traffic ordinance that deals with these things. And there, I think they should be enforcing it. I don't think the town should be involved in putting a handicap spot in there. Now, if there's a handicap issue, which I'm looking and walking by there at the Dairy Joy, then I would think it'd be up to Dairy Joy to put in a handicap spot on their property because no one's going to walk across the Green Street if this traffic is, as this, uh, letter claims is bad there. They're not going to walk across from the, from the west side to the east side to go to Dairy Joy. So, uh, I, I, I don't see the, the, the knowledge behind this one.
Well, um, are they talking about taking what is now a legal parking space and just make it into a handicap space?
No, there's no parking space there at all.
There's no parking space there at all. Yeah, that's what I thought.
They're putting one there. So why, if there's none.
Yeah, I don't, I don't get that either. What's, what's the reasoning there?
Because right now there, there's no parking, I think, obviously near the stop sign and obviously no parking where there are driveways. But then the rest of the parking, I don't believe is controlled. So it's a way to control some of the parking and, and put people either parking on the lot or parking farther away and walking.
And in other words, people that aren't dissuaded because it's illegal to park will be dislaid because it's now handicap parking? Is that?
Well, if they park in the handicap spot supposedly illegally, you're gonna, you know, you can ticket them.
Right.
They could ticket them for parking in the wrong spot now if they wanted to or for, for obstructing traffic. I, the better way to approach it would probably be to redesign that, that intersection so that it comes to a, a T intersection. And right now the thing that, that really makes this more difficult is the bridge being closed because the traffic can back up. So if you're trying to come out Green Street and there's traffic going north, you can get out halfway in the street and there's, there's somebody waiting to greet you right there. And, and that's what creates a, a hazard right there. Uh, but that's, that's a temporary situation because once the bridge gets fixed, we're back to where we are again. So.
And jurisdictionally, this is a town, not a village issue?
Well, the only reason I think they're approaching the town is because the town owns, uh, maintains the highways and stuff. So we would, we probably be the ones that would put the, uh, spot in, you know, do the painting for the handicap spot and then upkeep and all that. And then if the situation continues, then it's an enforcement issue and the, the town doesn't enforce the parking of the traffic. It's the village. They have the police department. So it's, you know, to me, it's a mixed issue. So.
And, and would the village trustees want to weigh in on this, do you think?
I think they already have. But I don't know if they have or not, Scott. Have they discussed this at all?
I have not had it on an agenda. I can certainly bring it forward. It's only been to the ordinance committee and then to you for consideration. You haven't done anything formal.
Okay. Now maybe we should bounce it back to them and see what their thoughts are. And then, uh, if it comes back around again, we'll whack at it again.
That would be my recommendation.
I wonder if it would make any more sense rather than creating parking spots in a place that's not actually supposed to be for parking. Just kind of seems like a bit of a gimmick, I guess. Kind of a roundabout way of going at it. I wonder if it would make sense just to mount a couple of, um, those breakaway, uh, traffic alerts there just to block the, the spots to prevent people from parking there, uh, just during the summer months, you know?
Well, if, if, if you ever been there when it's busy for a Dairy Joy, it, it, it's difficult to park there because you have people that are coming in and they're trying to back out. So if you're parked on, on the street and somebody's in the lot trying to back out, they're not going to move until you move. So, uh, that's an issue. Plus there's a, there's a manhole. It's about six or eight inches deep, which is got a post in front of it that you're not supposed to be parking on. And I, and, and across the street where the hairdresser used to be, which they're still iron the back part, but even our, uh, the, uh, Rayleigh Stevo had his, had a place in the Healds building. That's the other side. They would be putting another parking spot over there on that side. And then you go down another, the other side of the driveway to that property over there, it just signs, there's no parking from here to corner. So to me, it's, uh, I don't know. It just doesn't make sense to put the parking lot there. Uh, I would be better off if you're going to take and redesign that corner. So you got a straight on intersection.
What I mean is, um, instead of, you know, making these parking spots, try to sway people parking there. Basically just putting up a couple of posts, uh, in the way so they can't park there, you know?
And like I said, I, I don't know. Then I don't know how the aesthetics, I guess, would probably come into play at that. Somebody probably complained that you're, you know.
Well, I think you were talking about those like big old concrete things that they put-
No, not that substantial. I just mean those little fiber, those yellow fiberglass posts, they're like two inches in diameter and have-
On candlesticks, they use it for delineation. It's a little difficult. Usually they're used for delineation when they're trying to create turning lanes or ways to separate traffic. So it's really not used very often.
They had them on the bridge for a while there, you know, those little, what they call pogo sticks.
Yeah, okay.
Stuck up about three or four feet.
Yeah.
And that's what I think, they got about the Saxon River at the, at the post office out there, those three or four, to keep people from going onto the sidewalk. It's worked, but. Okay. We, we'll kick that back to the village and see what they come back with. Okay. Item number five is to adopt the 2021 local emergency plan, management plan.
Right. So every- Couple of years, as part of our obligation to the state emergency management folks, we update our local emergency management plan. It's really just a contact list. It's not as comprehensive as our hazard mitigation plan or other plans that are going through updates at the moment. It's more for contact. It's required to, just basically for us to go through it and update it every couple of years because people leave positions, new people come, you know, numbers change, what have you. So this is really just a, an update to the 2019, which was the last time that the board had updated the plan. So it's just a continuation. Nothing, nothing new, nothing significant, just a continuation.
Okay. Take a motion to adopt?
Well, what we were given is, is not updated. It says Wendy Harrison.
I think Sean sent, sent the, there is an updated one that has the new-
Oh, really?
Everett, Everett's on here as a rock-
Yeah, this is all old stuff.
Right. Probably the only action that you would have to do, like you said, is your contacts through the board, your, your alternates. And then all updated and bring it back so we can approve it on the 18th.
Right. Why don't we, why don't we pass on that and bring a corrected form back and we'll take it up to the next meeting?
Do we not have all of it? What we were given begins on page two. According to the page numbers here.
Make sure you're looking at double, double prints. Double solid.
You've got three, two, three.
Well, the first page shows the-
First one does not have a number on it.
Updated 1019 or 1015 2019, which shows the last update.
It does, you're right. The next page starts at two, two pages on the backside of the board's committee letter.
Okay. All right.
If you could designate your primary and alternates, at least we'll, we can update that so you can approve that. That would be helpful. Yes.
Do you want volunteers or, or?
We could go to executive session if it's, you know, that. Yeah, someone in the village would make sense.
So it's me or Elijah then?
Yep. I nominate.
So, so what do you have to do if you, if you are just, so like if a nuclear bomb goes off or something?
It's if we have another major hurricane event, major national, you know, natural disaster where we're into, you know, states of emergency and they use these to help with callouts and just notifications.
Okay. So it's really just contacts?
Right. You're not expected to go out and, you know, right. Safe today.
Make the water go the other way.
All right, I'll do it. I'll be a contact.
How good are you at filling sandbags?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. So we've got one alternate.
And I'll do the, oh.
And Sue. So I guess we're all set.
And do we need to vote on that or just done?
Yeah, we need to vote on that.
Okay. So I propose that the alternates be Susan Hammond and Bonnie North.
We'll hear a second. All right. Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're all set and you will, you-
I will do the updates and make sure we have it updated for your-
Okay.
Just approval for the 18th.
And we do this every two years?
It's every two.
Okay. Well, that's good because Bonnie's on it for a year and I have two years left, so.
It works perfectly.
Don't have to do it again.
Yeah. Okay. Before we get to the next item, there was a memo in here from, I guess, Gary to you about that member designated transportation project. I think-
We're going to talk about that under the violas.
Had to do with that.
Yes.
Just information purpose only, so anybody who was interested. Okay, Laurel, we're getting to you finally. Are you still awake? Okay. I'd see going to be a presentation of Blue Sky Day Disaster Presentation, Laurel Green.
All right. I'm Laurel Green. I'm a resident in Bellas Falls. I wear several hats around here. I'm on the Energy Committee and the Conservation Commission. I'm also the Chair of Sustainable Rockingham and kind of the leader of the resilience team within Sustainable Rockingham. And it's the team that's really up and running. It has, we've been going all year in spite of COVID. And so it's with that resilience team hat that I'm here today. Resilience, as you may know, is the ability to bounce back from any challenge. And that is true of an individual or a family's resilience or a community's resilience. And the whole resilience thing is a complex jigsaw puzzle. There's lots of pieces to it. And emergency preparedness, like the local plan that you were just looking at, is part of how we increase our resilience for our community. So our resilience team has been working with the town manager and the emergency management director, Scott Pickup and Sean McGinnis. Scott had actually suggested that we consider having a public education campaign this summer called Blue Sky Days to help with emergency preparedness in our town. And I had to look up what Blue Sky Days meant. It's actually a term from the American Red Cross. They have your Blue Sky Days and your Gray Sky Days. A Blue Sky Day is business as usual and a great time to prepare for emergencies. A Gray Sky Day is response to emergency, all hands on deck, you're in the thick of it. So you want to prepare ahead of time is kind of the idea. Vermont Emergency Management has prepared and has available these really cute little handy dandy guides. And the fourth tab back is how to prepare your own emergency kit. And they can be useful for either shelter in place or grab and go. And so we're kind of focusing on that for this summer. There's a lot of other things to do and as you read and work through the suggestions in here, you'd have a year's worth of work to do. But let's, we're just going to focus on the grab and go kit. We are tentatively looking at the dates of July 23rd to August 2nd for the Blue Sky Days. And you'll, might recognize that that embraces the dates of old home days. One of the things we're doing is encouraging people to develop their own grab and go kit or be able to shelter in place. I kind of like the grab and go idea, which I've demonstrated here tonight. I filled a backpack in about an hour with things that would be useful for me. This is, this is my kit. Your kit would look different. You know, if I had a, I don't have any pets. If I had a pet, I would have to include care for that or children or elderly people. So this is mine. I have some food. I have a way to get water and I have my own copy of this in my kit. So the main purpose I'm here tonight, I've charged from our committee who's working on this to come and invite you, if you don't already have a grab and go kit for yourself, to put one together. And if you would be willing to, oh, to do it, you could just gather things you already have. You might want to add some things that are suggested in here that you don't have that you would find useful. And it's like one of the things on the table is a backpack. It also works as a duffel. And so I can have all my things in there. I have a designated place for it in my house so that I'll be able to, on a moment's notice, be able to go. So here's our, the ask for tonight. If you're willing to be a model for the rest of our community, the resilience team would like to find six to 10 community leaders. And of course, the select board, town manager, the chief of police, chief of fire, are people that are models for our community. If you would be willing to gather your own kit and put it on display during the Blue Sky Days. And you might want to have it labeled. We are talking about working with local artisans to make it a little jazzier. And our hope is to work with some of the businesses downtown to have a place where kits can be displayed. So community members can go, oh, they put that in the kit. You know, my sister is out in Oregon, the fires out there came within 10 miles of her home and she had suggestions for me about what to put in my kit. She said, I know you, you would stay up all night worrying about stuff. Put in an empty blank notebook and a pencil so that you can write down all your thoughts and you'll be able to sleep better if you're in an emergency situation. She also said repair of underwear are a really good idea. There were a lot of people in Oregon walking around in wet underwear because they had the one on their body when they walked out the door. So, you know, a lot of people give you new ideas. So the idea is to have a few kits from people in town who are willing to put theirs on display and you get to choose. I have a kind of a mock important document. It's a file folder with rubber bands around it modeled after what my sister had ready to go when she was prepared to leave at a moment's notice when the fires were getting that close. Those aren't actually my most important documents. But in your kit that you actually have, you'll want those. But for display, it doesn't have to be the actual papers. So if you're willing to do this in cooperation with the resilience team, I'd love to have you get ahold of me if you're willing to put together a kit for display. And that's what we've got tonight. If you didn't pick up one of these, I have plenty of them, so you can have your own guide to be able to do this. So I'm willing to answer any questions?
I, Laurel gave me one of those kits, the, the book list. It's kind of handy if you're reading down through it. So if you're interested, please pick one up.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for your leadership of our community. It really makes a difference to everybody, whether they know it or not, and for your attention tonight. And I'm going to be picking up and leaving while you go on to the rest of your business.
Appreciate you taking your time.
Thank you, Laurel.
Get us up to date. All right. Discussion of the Violas Bridge, that goes back to the memo that was in your packet, I think.
Right.
So.
Probably have Gary jump on a microphone too here so we can, we can tag team this item. So he's been involved. I know members of the board have been involved at various points in conversations with our neighbors and some of our various federal officials. So we've been working our way through this new process. We have some additional, we're going to be applying again through Senator Sanders for support for earmarks. And then we're still looking at other opportunities to get support through the State Transportation Improvement Program. Again, because we have to have acronyms for everything, that's the STIP. Or the Transportation Improvement Program, that's the TIP. Those are names that you'll hear continuously. Those are critically important through planning because that's where the federal dollars flow. So when you get programs that are on those, those plans, that's where ultimately projects get funded and then get done. So with that as a little background, Gary, maybe you can give us just an update on a couple of the more recent events and then maybe we'll take questions from individual members who I think have been doing some work as well.
So as you can see from your packet, we did express to Congressman Welch's office that some disappointment in the, the level of funding in the community projects fund. And when we, when the select board directed us to apply for these earmarks, we, we called Congresswoman Welch's office and discussed them. And the, their indication was that it, it made sense to apply for these projects in the earmark, in the community project funding, even though they weren't in the one-year shovel ready and they were for a lot of funds because it was important to get them on the radar. They did not indicate that they wouldn't get funded. And, and then they also put projects that they identify onto, onto the transportation infrastructure program, which are the projects that you see in your packet. So the, the, the challenge with getting onto that list with the projects in the packet, they're, they're V-Trans, for the most part, V-Trans submissions. They are in the, in the region of funding that our projects are in. As you can see, the, the bridge in Reading, I think, is a $9 million project. So the Violas Bridge is owned by New Hampshire and it's on the New Hampshire step. In order for, in order for this bridge to be put on Vermont's, to be eligible for Vermont to get funding through the highway program that these are in and for V-Trans to support it and submit it, it has to get onto the Vermont step. And the, the challenge is to get V-Trans to support putting it on the step when it's a New Hampshire owned facility. So, so this is really a, a multi-pronged approach. As, as Scott indicated, we're going to, through multiple levels. You folks, Rick was working with our state delegates to get joint resolutions for state government to support it. That put some pressure on V-Trans to look at it for the step because that, that will be required to get federal highway funding. We're having a, a call with Welch's office to talk through how they can support these projects. What are, what are the options that we can use? These projects for the island are critical to the economic development of Rockingham's downtown. And so Welch's office has a transportation specialist in addition to the liaison, Rebecca Ellis, who we work with. And he's going to be on the call as well. And we're going to talk through options for that. Bernie Sanders' office has a same thing earmark request open right now. And we did communicate with their office. Both offices had gone to federal highway a few years ago when the select board asked us to write our congressional delegates. And so we, we went back to the same people who worked with federal highway and said, this is where it stands and said, hey, hey, look, so this is where the challenge still is. For instance, Senator Sanders' office came back to us in 2019 and said, okay, New Hampshire, federal highway, we got them to talk to New Hampshire because of that agreement from 1994. New Hampshire said, look, we're doing, we're doing what we said we would do. It's on our step for 2029. And so that's true, it's on there, but it's only funded at 50%. And it, it says right in their 10-year plan, funding source for the other 50% needs to come from someone, not us. And, you know, so we said to Senator Sanders, okay, so this is what you came back to us with. Here's the facts. They still need $5 million in the 2019 money. You know, 2029, it's, it's likely to be more expensive. be, um, more expensive. So we need some help with this. So we, we, we let them know that. We will put it into the, um, Sanders', um, uh, to the Senate earmark request as well. And those were those, those are where those pieces stand. And, um, just in terms of the, uh, the Depot Street Bridge, there was, um, some, some good idea proposed about, um, uh, can we do an earmark for match for Depot Street? And as, uh, VHB indicated, um, Depot Street is federal funds and cannot, so, so it can, it's federal highway, so we cannot use an earmark to match those federal highway, which is why I was clarifying with them. And on May 18th, um, there's a meeting about the, um, the other, the other funds that are coming through the American Rescue Plan. And we will ask them, are the funds going to come through with the federal pass-throughs or will they be considered state funds? And, um, uh, they may, they may be eligible to, to match bridge funds or, or not. But, but, but so that's where the whole package of bridge funding stands today. Um, the, uh, some support that we can get. The area-wide plan is starting on this, uh, this Friday. Uh, we're meeting the consultants, um, uh, looking at the properties, the island. Uh, Scott did indicate for the area-wide plan, when we met with them in the pre-planning, that, that the bridges should be a priority of the area-wide plan. So here we have, uh, economic development professionals from Stevens Associates, the planning professionals at Wyndham Regional Commission, um, and, uh, the environmental folks, um, who, who will be putting together a plan for highest and best use economic development of all the properties on the island and can write their professional, um, opinions and nexus to the, the importance of the bridges to these highest and best uses and economic development. So the plan is not due to be done until August. And we did ask them to present the final in September to make sure people aren't away on vacation. So not sure if that will be in time to be helpful with the, the Depot Street, but, um, we will, we will have that additional support for the, um, bridge projects.
Great, Gary, thanks.
Scott, do you have anything to add to that or you all said, I guess?
I guess really that the idea is we'll keep working on multiple avenues here, right? So I guess there was 130 submissions through Peter Welch's office that were not funded. So you can see the, the level of demand out there from all over the state. And it's, um, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that maybe our, our elected officials at the federal level can look at some of these unmet needs and start to help us prioritize some of these because it's obvious that, you know, 10 projects, you can do the math, right? This will be forever to get, you know, to, to knock through all these types of things. So, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a slog, but I think it's a worthwhile slog and we'll keep looking for new avenues. So, you know, every time we hit a, a dead end, we make a turn and go in a new direction.
Question.
Okay.
I have a question, Peter. I follow this, uh, reopen the Vilas Bridge Facebook page. Have you seen this?
I haven't.
So, so one of the posters said that New Hampshire signed an agreement some years ago that it would maintain historic bridges and has not fulfilled that, that requirement. Is there any legal route that would, would that be of any value, Gary?
So, so, um, that's the 1994 agreement I was referring to that, uh, the select board directed, um, in 2019 that we work with our congressional delegate on, delegates. And they, they did, all, all of them went to, uh, federal highway, took that agreement to them and, um, and that's the one that they, New Hampshire DOT said, we are meeting the agreement. In terms of, um, the fact that they had the bridge, uh, on their transportation plan to be repaired in 2007, uh, kicked it back to 2011, then 2015, then took it off the plan. And they, and, and in their engineering study, they said the bridge is, they use the term "only," is, is, um, uh, getting worse, um, uh, by 5% per year. So given that, you know, from 20, 2007 to 2029 is, is 22 years, the, the, um, the, the bridge is deteriorating in a serious manner, is not consistent with the agreement. However, um, in terms of Vermont taking legal action, the agreement is between New Hampshire DOT, um, Federal Highway, and the Federal Historic Preservation Commission. And it's, it's very specific to, um, the Vilas Bridge, the, the structure of it. It was only one of two of those types of bridges left. And New Hampshire wanted to demolish the bridge in Newport, which was the other of the two bridges like it. And, um, and so that was their quid pro quo. In, um, in authorizing them to demolish the Newport Bridge, they said, so then you have to maintain the Vilas Bridge in perpetuity, then it's the only one. Uh, but Vermont's not a party to that agreement.
So who?
In terms of, in terms of Vermont taking legal action.
So who would pursue legal action if Vermont were, if New Hampshire were in violation of that agreement? Who would be the plaintiff?
Yes, yeah, so that would be federal highway. And federal highway came back and said that they, they agreed with, um, that New Hampshire DOT satisfactorily supported that they're maintaining it and that federal highway has, their opinion was they had, they couldn't direct the prioritizing of the state's projects and that they did have the project in the plan, so they were meeting their commitment. That was their opinion. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Just gets deeper, that's all it is.
It's amazing.
Okay, uh, we have a grant award acceptance for DEC facilities grant that has to do with, uh, the, um, urine and other items down at recycling. I'll let Scott lead off of that one.
So we have the old wooden cabs that's being recycled right now. Fires and food scraps that fall past it. Talked about updating that building to include our recycling program. We talked about on one portion of our facility and then updating our food scrap recycling so that the energy, uh, our air proof is, is bringing, serving family. We've been contracting more, more fares lately and that's, that's a concern before. So we have, the, the roads are designed so that it takes a lot more stress and the wilds can get it. And it's, 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 you see now.
Flip it open.
Top on with the, so that's the proposal. It's not a significant grant, but it's a step in the right direction. Always hopefully to get the return, uh, spend to let it buy that, that portion, that some sort of structure there where that would build it up there. Something will suggest that we move the water, uh, water, soda that's sitting up at the, uh, on that down. Possibly do that. I really have a core that option. Conversation, that's something.
Mike? No, your mic has to go on, Scott.
So we didn't put, you know, we don't have an identified use, so those are some options, but this will be the first phase in trying to do something there to update that portion of the recycling center.
Hey, I'll take a motion to accept the award.
I second that motion.
Motion's made in sector to accept the grant award for DEC facilities grant and the amount of $1,000. Uh, any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, financials. Everybody got a copy of those in their packet? Interesting. Does anyone have any specific questions? Scott, on the balance sheet, I, I've got a few other ones here, but rather than delay the meeting and keep dragging this out tonight, I can stop in and go review them. But on the balance sheet, it says delinquent taxes receivable of $487,418 in penalties and interest of another $112,150 making, and delinquencies, I would assume about 600 grand. Is that correct? Am I reading that? Do I understand that correctly?
I think part of that has to do with the periods, Peter, and how things are recorded. I don't think our, our total receivables are at that level. So I'll have to get back to you with an updated number on that.
Stop in. The other question here is, it says tax posting variance. What is, what is that?
I think that's, again, when we're in between periods because we haven't done all the closeouts. So there's still some items open. So I think that's part of how they've got journal entries out still for some items that'll have to be updated.
Anyone else have any questions?
Um, Scott, you may have addressed this before, but the, having $400,000 in, uh, delinquent taxes. Remember you mentioned something that it was sometimes more expensive for the town to, um, sell a property than it is to let, just let, let the untapped pay taxes accrue. Is that right?
Well, I think we've talked about, and we'll probably talk again at our joint meeting in June, about possibly looking at doing a delinquent sale maybe by September. I think there was some hesitancy with some of the COVID impacts and just where we were. But I think now probably we'll, we'll take a hard look at that, put together our list and then have a conversation at that June meeting if we want to go forward in the fall. It does take a substantial amount because of all the requirements from a legal standpoint and all the notices and all that. It does take a substantial amount of money to do a tax sale, but at this point it's probably, we're probably in that ballpark to start that ball rolling.
I think we talked about that, uh, last budget season. I thought, I, so you brought it up about maybe looking at one next, next time around after we get to redissue and see with the COVID and see how, how this worked out and then, you know, maybe plan for one next spring and see how the taxes go from there.
I was thinking just September, just because by then we'll, I think, you know, all of the restrictions seem to be, are going to be lifted by July, so.
Because most of those costs and attorney's fees are, you know, are included when the, when the deal is done anyway, when the sales prop, so you do sometimes break even, sometimes you're, you know, that's the intent to break even, get your taxes paid and penalty interest and the attorney's fees, that's all included when it's, when the deal's done, so.
Yeah, it's not a windfall by any stretch.
I think the last time it was like a $20,000 we.
I think when it was all said and done, it was under 50 grand in total. I don't remember the.
It's not a loss cause and, and it does motivate people, uh, you know, because you, if you ever look at the delinquent tax report, in-town report, you'll notice that there's always the same ones. And I know we've talked about getting a list of the delinquencies and, and the arrangements that are made because we don't know, uh, what arrangement is made. If it's somebody owes $3,000 and they're paying $100 a month, they're never going to catch up. So I think Scott and I, we've talked about, we were getting a list together so that the board would get some idea of what kind of arrangements are made with these people. I don't think it's that drastic, but I mean, it'd be interesting to see what kind of arrangements made.
Yeah, I noticed in the newspaper that a lot of our surrounding towns are, are cranking through these things.
Oh, yeah.
Quite frequently. And $480,000, that's a, that's worth pursuing, I would, I mean, what percentage of we can recover, who knows, but.
Yeah, but I don't know if all of those are actually within that timeframe where they could go to tax sale.
Right.
So not all of that is that way.
Some are current delinquencies would still have to age out. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on that for that June meeting and I think we'll have a, a more in-depth conversation if we want to wait till the spring. That's, you know, I guess let the.
And we, we used to get the list in our packet, which we haven't been getting. It would be good to get that as well because you can see from that how many, how many years delinquent they are, as you get that breakdown. In reality, you don't, it doesn't turn out to be a lot that are several years in delinquency.
Okay. Thank you.
And to be honest, some people do play that game. I'll wait till the end of the year and then I'll pay them and pay the 8% penalty, which is redundant, but then again, the people do that every time. You know, I don't know how they think they're making out, but.
I don't know if it's changed now that, I mean, things are selling, property's selling.
Yeah, things are selling now.
So it could be that people, I know there are people who've been trying to sell a piece of land or, and they just can't get a buyer, so they, they don't pay the taxes. And then at the end of the year, they finally pay them.
Could be in this market, you might have a different outcome.
Might have different.
It's possible.
So when, when they are sold though, we collect our taxes before the purchase can be finalized?
We do get the taxes.
We're usually first in line traditionally. Most of these folks tend to owe lots of things and lots of people.
Okay.
Yeah, not just us.
All right, thanks.
All right, uh, let's move on to the review of agenda items for next meeting. Um, we got the updated emergency plan. We're going to have that on there.
We'll give you an update on the.
You sent the theater draft to me, I don't know, and Rick's got one, I think Sue's got one. I didn't know if you want to throw that on there for a chat about it or you want to wait till you have your committee meeting and then?
I'm hoping we'll have the committee meeting the week before.
Okay, let's, let's wait for that.
So we could have something on in the 18th to talk about the theater because we're sort of hitting that, those, those, uh, you know, those, those milestones now.
Yeah. The other thing is, um, the electric vehicle testing. We did have a meeting last week, I think it was.
Yep.
Um, and basically we just, the thought was that we'll make a, we just have to make a decision one way or another on this. And that should happen at the joint board meeting in June, but we should have a discussion between now and then. And Mike did send a list of, um, which I don't know if all the board got that.
I haven't circulated that.
Okay, so if we put that on the agenda next week, then you can get a, it's a list of, you know, basically they answer some of the questions that maybe you have about it and.
It's kind of frequently asked questions, sort of an update, just a general.
Okay.
So we can have a discussion that, next week or next meeting.
All right. What, and one other, the town, the Monday through Thursday town office, did you mention earlier, Scott, that that will be part of your plan for getting back to?
We're going to look to phase to reopen. I'm sort of waiting to see how, how the governor goes with the restrictions and the public and we'll, we'll do probably a fit, you know, we'll probably follow phasing with that as well.
Okay, was that, was that motivated by the, the town itself or was that part of a protocol from the, from the state? Did other towns close their town offices for certain?
There are still towns that are closed period, still to visitors. So this was sort of a middle ground approach to maintaining operation. And in most places, it's kind of amazing to me, talking to other communities, they still are only available by limited appointment or not open at all, still.
Really?
Most still do Zoom meetings only.
Yeah.
No in-person select board meeting.
Okay, so we're doing relatively well.
We've probably been a little more open than others, to be honest.
Okay.
Just as a point of information too, um, that started when we, uh, tried to do this economy thing and save money for the town and people were dismissed and, and then they cut back to the four-day week. The interesting part is the union, uh, contract says that the regular people, except the highway, are supposed to work five, eight-hour days. So in the negotiations, we brought that up and we said, why aren't you enforcing that? And they said, well, if the employees and the management agree, then we don't have a problem with it. So it may be a bargaining chip to take out of the union negotiations that come around. If you're not going to enforce it, why do you want to put it in there? The highway was designated that, that they would work for, you know, 10-hour days, except in the wintertime because of the darkness and the safety situation.
Right.
Gets darker early, but just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
If you read the union contract, you, you'll see it in there.
All right. I mean, oh, I, I was hoping that, I mean, Scott and I had a preliminary conversation, but when, and this is down the line when, when it's safe to do so, but the swap shop is a kind of a beloved institution and it also keeps a ton of stuff out of the waste stream. And so I would love to at some point, not now, not in the near, sort of, when, when it's safe to do so, I'd like to consider that volunteer operation, how we might restart it.
Okay, I've got another point, but I'm going to wait to bring it up under other business.
The other thing, did we put on there, um, the discussion about the pit, which we should have?
Um, no, I will, I will add that too. We'll do an update on town operations and just continuation of the conversation of the, uh, that, this, yeah, the, the property of.
I would also like to see us, um, discuss the town website sometime sooner than later.
Bonnie's favorite subject.
Exactly.
Yeah, well.
She loves it.
Yeah, I, why don't you send me your suggestions? Chuck and I are going to, uh, spend a little time on Monday looking at it together because I've been grousing about it so much.
Well, that's the only one. I've, I've been here with some rumblings on the outside, so.
I've heard kind of comments about it.
Everybody, you know, you aren't going to make everybody happy anyway.
No, I know, but there's, 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 there's things that need to be corrected, you know, and, and so forth. So if you have suggestions, why don't, why don't you email them to me and, and I'll, I'll keep them in mind when, when we.
Just don't get more than two people involved.
Yeah, I know, I know. But we're going to actually sit down with, with, uh, phones and iPads and desktops and look at it and try and figure out, you know, what kind of things need to be corrected there.
Okay, agenda items for the joint board, uh, we got till the end of June, so. Okay, agenda items for the joint board, we got till the end of June, so we've got a couple of weeks to play with that. If you have anything you can come up with, let Scott know, and we'll get that on there. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the orders, bills, and warrants. Everybody had a chance to look at them electronically.
Yep.
I move to approve the orders, bills, and warrants.
Go here a second.
I second.
You want to sign these?
All those in favor would say aye.
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 Motion carries, and they're coming around. There's a bunch of them in the payables, so. Okay, while those are going, other business, and seeing as they're going that way, we'll start with lies. You have anything for other business?
Hearing none.
Sue?
Just a question of what's happening with mowing and everything this year? Where grass is growing quickly, and have we hired new part-timers to get involved in all that?
We are in the process of hiring probably at least two. It'll be starting soon. Now, we do have our contract continuation, so yeah, we should hopefully see that in the next two weeks, starting to kick into gear.
Yeah, because I know it's hard to find.
It has been brutal to find, and I'm nervous about, yeah. It's just, well, you guys see the signs, right? Everywhere you look, somebody's looking for help wanted. And it's not, it's an incredibly competitive marketplace right now for a part-time helper. But I think we've at least got two to start.
I think that was it.
Going back to the building and the DEC award for the beer proof stuff, are we going to pay for that? We're now currently, if you look at the financials, we're not gaining a hell of a lot of ground. We're running a $35,000 deficit right now. We don't seem to be catching up on, I do agree with you on the tires, we talked about that, because we're getting skunked on those things.
We're doing better on our capture rate. I think the issue is we're losing money on some of the other items that we have to probably update our fees for, like the, taking the carbo, you know, the CFCs out of the, out of those refrigerated units and those types of things. Those rates have gone up. We have to increase some of our costs to meet some of those, and I think that'll drive some of that deficit down. If you look at our total revenues, they're up, but I think our expenses are up because of the cost of some of that material.
Is there any interest in putting out a press release about what we're trying to accomplish down there? I wouldn't, I'd volunteer to write one. I wrote a couple of them already about, you know, when the tickets are available and, you know, what we're doing down there, being weighing materials. I think somebody told me once, if there's more than five rubbish bags, they're running them over the scale now, because we've been losing money on that.
Right.
They're hiding all kinds of stuff. I mean, I can get together with you, we can run some ideas by, and then I'll send you a draft of them, if you want. I mean, because there's nothing to put a press release in the paper, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, I think we should do that. A lot of people don't have any idea what the rules are or anything down there.
You know, just tell them that stickers are available and, you know, so.
I had one more thing that I forgot to ask about. Was the meeting house for the summer, I mean, we're getting close to Memorial Day. What's the plan with that, or is that something you'll update us on next week, too?
Talking with Walter and with the folks the other day, it looks like they're going to be open fairly soon with docents and centaurs, and there's a couple of projects ongoing with the paint. And I think that's a, you know, a historic rendering and matching project that's underway. I just signed an agreement for that.
Thank you.
And I think then we have another portion of the building that I think we do have to paint, if I remember correctly.
We haven't painted it in years.
I know. So I think we're due for another side, so.
We're behind by three sides.
Well, we're behind by three. And I guess we'll be one-third, one-third less behind after we get the.
Has the historical commission officially opened that? I know last year with the COVID, they closed it up. They weren't.
They had a couple of conversations last week about trying to put this together and reopening. Sort of following the same guidelines that we've talked about with the state reopening, so.
Yeah, I think what we were thinking of is doing weekends only or something to start with for the first, you know, month or two, and then going to full-time after that.
Do we promote that? I had some out-of-town guests and took them over there, and they were just amazed at what a remarkable piece of architecture, and then walking through the cemetery and seeing all the graves. I just don't know how many people know about that.
I don't know, the website.
Oh, geez, here we go.
Well, that felt like a setup.
There's a lot in our town we can promote on our website.
Yes, I 100% agree.
Bonnie, you have anything out of the business, besides the website?
No.
Rick?
Nothing.
We're all set? Okay, no need for the executive session, I guess, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Go here a second, and all those in favor would say aye.
Aye. Good luck.